All right, so we can get started. Thank you, everybody, for joining this public oversight hearing. I guess it's our first, our first one doing it virtually. So thank you all for being here and thank you to everybody who worked on getting this put together. No need to go through with introductions again because we did that. And to make up for the last hearing that we had, that when hours over, I'm going to try to keep this short and sweet. And I see Michelle's big smile after saying that. So I'm going to try to get right to it. So Commissioner, if you want to jump into your presentation and then we'll open up the floor for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon again to everyone. Now, we've seen decreases in nearly every statistical category of crime, some in double-digit declines. In fact, total park one crimes right now is down seventeen percent. We've been seeing this trend from the beginning of the year, even through the end of last year. And that trend continues even before COVID-19 even arrived, and it's continuing through COVID-19. However, there are a couple of exceptions. While total robberies are down about five percent, the number of home invasions has risen sharply. So what we're seeing is that fewer people are going out. There are fewer opportunities for criminals to commit street robberies. With businesses being closed, the result has been fewer commercial robberies. Because crimes of opportunity occur where people are located, right now, that's by and large in their homes. However, over the last week, we've seen a slight reduction in that trend, which is encouraging. As to homicides, the rate has remained about flat compared to last year at this same time. That's obviously not where we want to be. However, I also remain encouraged that the number of shooting victims are down nine percent as of right now. And our homicide clearance rate is at fifty-eight percent. And we are at the closing end of April. So we're also continuing our work with our local, state, and federal partners. And just this past weekend, we had several large takedowns that resulted in a half dozen arrests, nearly thousands of grams of fentanyl and heroin, and close to a million-dollar c's. As we all know, these are truly challenging times. As a city, we began being tested, but we'll get through this and we'll be stronger for it. As an agency, we've had to be creative in maintaining public order while also ensuring the safety of our members. So I again want to applaud, applaud the brave men and women of the Baltimore Police Department, who've put their own health at risk to ensure our residents are safe. They're heroes and we should be proud of them. Moreover, we should be grateful for their sacrifice and bravery, their unshakable commitment to the residents of Baltimore City. And so you've heard us already now talk about still being proactive, still making drug arrests, still making gun arrests, still going out answering citizens' calls. And so we're still doing the work, you know, although we're in a pandemic and we're still exercising fiscal responsibility, we're still making sure we're dealing with police reforms, even while we deal with crime, with homicides, with shootings, and being proactive. So with that, I want to hand it off to Deputy Deputy Commissioner Sullivan, Colonel Worley, and Colonel Briscoe, who are going to give you a more detailed briefing. So just give me a pause and Deputy Sullivan will come right on.
Good afternoon once again. And as we have been doing in the last several weeks, we're going to punt over to Colonel Worley and Colonel Briscoe, who are going to walk us through, through the crime numbers. Colonel?
Yes, sir. You want to just go through the EXAM numbers or do you want to go through the slide? How do you want to go from here, Councilman?
Whatever's, whatever's best for you, you can just go through. You can go through the slide and then if you can just highlight the certain, the key pieces like the robberies, carjackings, and points of interest.
Yeah, you have the, basically you have the slide right in front of you. I'm going to use the area that we're, the Commissioner had already brought up. The area that we're still struggling with a little bit is the residential robberies, which basically are the home invasions. Those are up significantly. That was mainly because of a pattern, a large pattern we were getting hit with in the southeast, the southwest, northern, and Baltimore County. Since Baltimore County has made the arrests of six or seven individuals, those robberies have pretty much disappeared. And they are maybe responsible, that crew may be responsible for over thirty home invasion robberies throughout the city. And especially mostly of those, most of those were in the southeast district. And I'll turn it over to Lieutenant, to Colonel Briscoe, give a little more update on that home invasion pattern.
Good afternoon, Council Chairman and Councilperson. So in that pattern we just spoke about with the home invasion pattern that largely was in the southeast district, there are approximately nine suspects that we have named, and there are an additional approximate nine persons of interest that we're evaluating. There are a total of, so that we saw this spike and we started to just try to pull together the intelligence about the cases and the commonality about the cases. We linked up with Baltimore County and saw that they had a pattern. So there are a total of approximately ninety cases that go back to about December. And as Colonel Worley just stated, that pattern has disrupted as a result of taking them into custody. At this point, we're looking to charge on the front end approximately thirty cases and then do the legwork to do, to bring those additional cases in line. So we're, we're working with our partners to develop the State's Attorney's Office to develop a prosecution strategy that spans across Baltimore County and Baltimore City. And so with that, we've shared some information in terms of safety where robbery is concerned through the JIC, just to give some, our community some support. We've had the district command teams echo out what we've been seeing to assist them in terms of sharing any information. So it was truly a collaborative effort with Patrol, CID, Baltimore City, and County. Colonel Worley?
Yep. And if you go through the homicide numbers, we are up slightly, one percent year-to-date. Non-fatal shootings are now down, were down fourteen percent. Total homicide and non-fatal shooting victims are down ten percent. Robberies were even despite the rise in carjackings and the rise in home invasions, robberies, as the Commissioner said, are down. So there's a few districts that are still struggling. Six of the nine districts are down in robbery totals. Six of the nine districts are down in carjacking totals. It's just, we were struggling a little bit in the northeast and the northwest, the northeast and northern with robberies. The northeast specifically was having a tough time. They were dealing with some.
Right-click on his name. Right-click.
Margaret, you guys have to mute yourselves.
The northeast was struggling a little bit, but they've settled down now since we've, we've deployed our SWAT resources there on a regular basis. We split them up between the northeast and the northwest because northwest was struggling. And one of the, the big, the big successes so far this year has been the, both the eastern and the western. Two of our most problematic districts probably for the last twenty to thirty years. They're both down significantly in all their crime categories.
Colonel Worley, just a quick moment, which, which, where are you at so I can put it up?
I'm on the EXAM sheet.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I saw the EXAM was up there before, so I just switched over to the EXAM and then it disappeared.
Yeah, they told me I was on the wrong one. I got you right now.
Okay.
Which district, sir?
We're actually citywide right now.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And if you go, street robberies are down ten percent, ag assaults are down six, burglaries are down twenty-two percent, auto thefts down eighteen, and larceny from autos are down twenty-five percent citywide. Do you want to go through the numbers for each district?
Yes, please. And also, if you can just, before you proceed, talk a little bit about what you're, what you are alluding to that you guys are going to be doing in the northwest and the northeast about the increases?
We're actually been doing it for probably the last three weeks now. We move our SWAT resources. We have, the districts have their own district action teams, they have their patrol teams. But every night we have a different set of resources out there. We had our special operations team, which includes one or two SWAT teams depending if they had raids the previous day or the early morning raids, they may not be available. For the most part, we got eight to ten SWAT officers, two supervisors out there every night. And what we do is we split them up between the northeast and the northwest because they were both seeing spikes. More so to northwest with homicide shootings, northeast was, was spiking in homicide shootings and robberies. We also have our mobile metro team, which is two additional teams that are out every night that we, we run the city based on what we see. And then we have K-9, we have our accident investigation team, and we have our overtime component that addresses the crowds that we put out since we started the, to address the coronavirus issues. So if they're not dealing with issues as far as the social distancing issues, problems, they will go throughout the city and go through the main crime areas.
Yeah, I did notice that increase along Rice's Town and the Belvedere corridors. So thank you for that.
Mr. Chair, before the Colonel, Colonel, sorry. Mr. Chair, before the Colonel goes any further, ask some questions citywide before we go into the districts.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Colonel, and thank you, Colonels. And thank you. As you know, the topic of home invasions is one that we all have been speaking about. And I spoke to the Commissioner about it at the beginning of COVID because this is something I've been worried about. Because as the Commissioner alluded to, we know that robbery crews are just going to adjust. And even with the arrests that we've been seeing made in the city and in the county recently, we still have, still have an eighty percent increase in the seven-day. Can you talk about if we're, like, if we're seeing another trend now that you think that one has been broken? Because it's still a, 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 a high jump, a high number, you know, going from five to nine this year, even though they're in the single business, but it's still, especially during a crisis like this. Can we talk about that for a second?
Yeah, we're actually not seeing a pattern. What we saw were two incidents that, that drove the numbers. The one incident on, on Monday of last week, we actually talked about it Tuesday, occurred in the northwest with four victims. So that, that's half of the victims right there. That's the problem with the home invasion robberies is that those numbers jump very quickly. We had one, I think, the week before in the eastern with eight victims. So those numbers, if there's eight people in the house and they get robbed, there's eight robbery victims. The good thing is after, so far in the knock on wood, so far this week, I do not believe we have had a home invasion robbery. And they are trending down since that crew was caught. Unfortunately, it's going to take us probably several weeks to get that number down simply because of the amount that they hit us with over the first three months of the year.
And then also just a follow, a follow-up on that, on that, Colonel? Can we talk about like what kind of messaging maybe you guys are putting out in the JIC and things that we can share with the community for folks to try to, especially things that we can share with our Latinx community? Try to keep them safe and keep everyone safe and keep them informed about this kind of, of trend so that we can try to do as much as we can from all sides to, to prevent these from happening?
Yeah, we, we can put out multiple messaging and we actually did. This, this crew was very, very unique in the fact that they, they pretty much knew somehow, and we haven't got to the bottom of that. They had houses that they particularly picked out that had Hispanic families in it. And usually there, that usually means there's somebody knows where, where somebody lives and that's where they go to talk. So.
Without, without, good question, sir. Thank you for that. Without going too into detail to some of the case specifics, because we are still pulling it together to be able to take this man to the trial, one of the suspects that we've taken into custody is, is a part of that community. So they, so it was, it had a nexus in terms of like information gathering, intel gathering that they were using to victimize. But as we've shared over our last few weeks, where the home invasion robbery is concerned specifically, is that we've had cases where there have been a, a large number of people in the house. Due to our, you know, stay-at-home, our shelter-in-place, we've had cases where we have ten, twelve victims in one incident. And we saw that when we saw two or three cases in the southwest district, which added to that number. So we shared information with the JIC, we shared information specifically about robberies to include commercial robberies. Because we saw a slight pattern happening with some of our commercial robberies when, when families were ordering. And we shared information with the JIC concerning our domestic violence vulnerable population.
And, and everything we do is done in Spanish. So we make sure we hit that, that population because it's growing significantly in the city. So we make sure we have a Spanish version of everything that we do. We had to do it with the governor's order and the mayor's order. So we're, we're becoming very good at, at getting the message out as quickly as we can. And I know the southeast Major Sneed and Captain Hopkins was getting the message out on their, their message boards and to the groups as quickly as they could about these issues.
And we have not had a case since April the fourteenth.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and we'll work, and Councilman Burnett is in the JIC. So we'll work with him to try to make sure that we're pushing any other information. I want to talk about like homicides too, as we, we've seen them stay flat, as the Commissioner said, versus last year. Can we talk about the, the trend that we're seeing with them even amidst COVID-19? And also if there's connectivity from two of the homicides in these vehicles that are being carjacked as well? Because carjackings are also something that, year-to-date, is up significantly.
Good question, Council President. So we have not seen a nexus between the carjacking specifically and the homicides. What we have seen as a common thread is the drug trade. That's still continuing as a motive, whether or not the drug trade is resulting in a dispute or purchase. But quite a few of our most recent homicides, especially since COVID, has been surrounding our drug trade in, in areas where I know that we are still challenged with, with that, that addiction, that disease. So that's what we've seen in terms of like commonality. And we have seen some people that are involved in the drug trade be, becoming, falling prey to the homicides. So there have been, as we noted on our, our previous calls, and I, I won't, if we can get into any specifics off this line, there has been some case connection in certain districts, and we've talked about that. There have been some in the northwest district, and there may be, there was been some in the, in the southern district. But I can tell you that we have had some gains in terms of case closure by making some arrests. Over the last few weeks, we have been able to arrest approximately eight, close to eight of our cases for arrest of homicides. So we have been making some gains and getting some support from the community in terms of intelligence. So that's been important as well to help us.
Thank you. And then you brought it up and it's something that we've been talking about on our weekly calls. Before we were with just us, you and me and the Chair and the Vice Chair, before we were able to have a hearing publicly, and we know we've been going in and out of those. But talk about especially during COVID-19, I think, knowing that this is requiring a lot of people to spend time together. Talk about the efforts you guys are making to communicate with folks. And then also, again, making a call out for folks who may be fallen victim to intimate partner violence or domestic violence and how it's important for them to figure out a way to communicate that, but also the work that you guys have been doing around that issue.
Absolutely, yes, sir. Thank you for that. So we, I can tell you that year-over-year, our homicide numbers are, I'm sorry, our domestic violence numbers are decreasing. So if you look at the seven-day on the EXAM, our domestic violence numbers are down sixteen percent, they're down three percent. In the twenty-eight-day and year-to-date, they're down ten percent. But what we saw since March, that we've gained approximately twenty additional cases. And I did a hand search to just really go through it so that I could be able to frame it when we had this conversation. So we saw a slight uptick in calls to service, but we weren't waiting in terms of, of waiting for the, the vulnerable victims to reach out to us. We've used our partner relationships to be able to get some messaging. We used, we used the JIC by sending some information from the House of Routh and some other partners that we normally work with to be able to reach out to our community members. And we've done that on social media, we've done it through JIC, and we'll continue, and through our relationships, and we'll continue to do that because we recognize that people are being shuttered in place, that we're not going to necessarily see some of the natural engagement that we're able to do. But we are still using our relationships to make way, a pathway for those that are potentially vulnerable and most affected to be able to have the support and the services. I know that the House of Routh has said that their resource pool has declined from the usual numbers that they're, that they're accustomed to serving, but that's not due to any lack of effort. It, it is really is a challenge to balance, of course, I'm sure, being shuttered in and, and reaching out for help. So we've discussed on our calls the many different ways that we are sharing with the public that they can do that, to include the texting to get some services and supports if there's, if they're needed. The House of Routh is still open, still providing sheltering, still providing services and support, as are we. And we're using the districts and the NCOs to help us with that message while they're out in community. So quite a few of the districts have been very proactive, working with our detective, especially in the districts where we're seeing a continuous increase and some challenges in some specific districts that we discussed. And I want to say it was the northern district that was still, that was having some challenges with domestic calls to service, as well as the northeast. Well, the northern, in the last seven days, they've gotten better. And the northeast, just to be able to share some of those resources and messages with the community liaisons and the different grassroots partners that are out on the ground, so we can make sure that we're providing the service that they need.
Thank you. And then, and to that, to that end, one of the things that was concerning to me, Colonel, was the amount of domestic aggravated assaults that spiked over the last twenty-eight days. As we know, people have been in, in, in the house throughout that time. So that was one of the things that spiked, spiked on me consistently asking these questions about, about domestics. And then the only last thing, Mr. Chair, I wanted to talk about really quickly was because we have homicides, at least being right around where they were last year. Always, as you know, I'm very concerned about gun arrests. I want to talk about gun arrests and seeing that gun arrests and where they are year-to-date across. It is down fifteen percent. And I want to talk about why we think that is. And also, if, again, as always for me, are we getting the guns off the right people? Meaning, meaning that we are arresting my BROs, the people that we know are committing the overwhelming amount of violence in the city?
I could tell you the, the officers are still out there working, even though the numbers, the numbers are down throughout for the year. Over the, just this week alone, we've got sixteen handgun arrests. And Monday and Tuesday were significantly good. Monday, we had six handgun violations, Tuesday, we had seven. So the officers are out there working. And actually, while we've been on the call, there's been at least one, I think, two, because I looked at my phone, they sent over a, where they got two rifles out of, off of something. I just happened to see the photo pop up on my phone. So those guys, they're out there working. And Central and the northeast are the only two districts that are up thus far this year. The Central is up thirteen percent, I mean thirty-four percent. Northeast is up nine percent. But we were trending down before the, before the coronavirus hit. And we're, we're down a little bit more, but for the most part, even in, I think it was last week when we talked, the twenty-eight-day period was up. So it's, it's kind of strange, but the officers are out there working. Like I said, there's no stopping cars, they're still doing search warrants. One of the big things that has helped us significantly was when we got that second MMU team back onboard a couple of months. I guess about a month ago now, their gun numbers have gone up pretty significantly since they've been back full strength. They were offline since, I think, August of last year or September of last year for that police.
Thank you. And Colonel, and to that, and to that point, also, I'm not expecting you guys to have this right now, but also if you can send the breakdown of those gun arrests, we'll send the, you know, so you can do that. And then there's some other follow-ups. I am done for now, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you.
Do you mean by district, Mr. President, do you mean by district?
Uh, no, I have the by-district number, but this is really for, for, for the Colonel, not for you, Colonel Worley, Colonel Briscoe. It's about the gun arrests and matching them to the numbers of BROs, those on the ARI list who have been arrested in, within those gun arrests.
I can tell you that, I'm sorry.
Great, yes.
I can tell you that. So we've had seventy-six at-risk individuals that have been arrested within those gun numbers.
So that's seventy-six of the total, which is three thirty-three, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, Colonels, before we proceed, I'm going to open the floor to a couple of my colleagues to ask some citywide questions. So Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question was related to narcotics arrests. And I, and I understand that for some of the offenses, you know, the decision is made to not prosecute based upon the fact of not allowing for the COVID-19 to spread through our correctional facilities. But when I look at the statistics, it looks as though we're making, in some areas, citywide, I guess, about fifty percent less arrests. And then in some districts, it goes up to probably almost seventy percent. So I, I kind of want to hear, you know, what, what exactly is our protocol as it relates to arresting? Because I'm hearing that on, on the street that, you know, drug dealers know, you know, nobody's going to get arrested. So in many of my communities, and I assume this is statewide, I mean, citywide, that there's this sense of lawlessness in many of the, in many of the areas. And so open-air drug markets are forming.
I'll, I'll touch on that, Councilman, this is Commissioner, and then I'll let, I'll let the Colonels jump in if they need to add more to it. And so, you know, we gave out guidance to the officers, clear guidance in writing and through video about what to do because we have a dynamic. Number one, we have to minimize exposure to COVID for our own sake, and we got to minimize exposure to the citizen from us. So when you layer that on top of the state's attorney's decision to, to not prosecute, first of all, their, the state's attorney's office is teleworking as well, courts are closed. And anything that's happening in courts has been, most of it has been done remotely also. And then there are a, a list of low-level misdemeanor offenses, some of which are drug-related, that are not being prosecuted. When you layer all that together, we put out written and video guidance to the officers about what to do and how to minimize exposure because of that. That doesn't mean we're not making the arrests. What we did is we gave the instruction that if, in spite of the social distancing, in spite of the fact that it may be a misdemeanor drug violation, that may not be prosecuted. If the officer felt for some reason that they needed to make the arrest, seek the permission of a lieutenant or above and give justification to the lieutenant why that needed to be done so that we can rise that to the appropriate rank to coordinate with the state's attorney on why we made that arrest anyway. And so we, we put that in, we put that in video. So we're, we're not saying don't arrest, we're giving them, we're asking them to use discretion and to prioritize their level of engagement to minimize exposure, especially on top of some of the things that are prosecutable right now, and some of them are misdemeanor drug crimes.
Commissioner, and, and thank you for sharing that. I, I know that in many of my, and I'm not going to make this community specific, so I'm trying to stay citywide. Because I, I believe that there's still, there are communities throughout the city where residents still feel they're the hostages because drug dealing has increased because of this. And I'm not challenging the fact that we need to do this in the midst of this pandemic, but something has to be done in order to relieve, you know, the, the situation that many residents find themselves living under as it relates to just an increased level of drug dealing. And, and I, and I would, I would love the debate later that somebody would even consider anytime somebody sells fentanyl as a low-level violation when we have almost a thousand people dying a year over, on overdose. So I don't know what the answer is, but I mean, I have communities that feel like they're the hostages and that they are under siege.
I think we all agree with you on that. I think we feel it as well. The officers are still out there doing the work. They're making gun arrests, they're making drug arrests. But there's some criteria that we're, we're now working with because of the pandemic. And to, to further that conversation, there's now, in, in order for massive release of individuals who don't arise to violent offenses. Some drug offenses, many drug offenses don't amount to, don't equate to violent offenses. And so now there's a conversation we have to have right now about how we're going to handle that because there are going to be quite a few people, not just here in this city, but across the state. And other governors are doing it across other states. Just on a conversation with police chiefs before this call, and it's happening in. Just on a conversation with police chiefs before this call, and it's happening in other cities, and we're all dealing with it, because it's the same, it's the same issues in, in all 50 states. People are now going to be released from jails and prisons because of COVID, if they're not in there on arrest for violence.
Right. And we know, we know the four zip codes where the majority of those individuals are going to come to, and many of them are going to come to Western District.
We, we, we're still policing, we're still enforcing the law, we're still enforcing the rule of law. And right now, right now, because of COVID, we just have to be smart about how we engage so that we don't overexpose ourselves unnecessarily, but still, we want to disrupt those open-air drug markets. And we can do that by, number one, enforcing the stay-home law to make people stay in. But we're dealing, you know, we're dealing with high levels of addiction, we, we get that. But we're trying to do that by disrupting it and minimizing exposure, which could mean minimizing the number of arrests we make as well.
And Mr. Commissioner, just to add on to what Councilman Pinkett is saying with the release of prisonism from prison, what kind of supporter resources does BPD need to help and assist you as we deal with this, with, with this public health order that the, the governor has made?
So the state's attorney and I had a conversation about that just this morning, so that we can work out protocols between her office and my office about how we're going to handle that. But I would say, on the very surface, very intense probation and parole help on supervise, you know, supervise visits and supervision, how we, you know, have intense case management for those that are being released, to make sure they don't reoffend and make sure that they're abiding by the stay-home rule and stay-home order as well. That's number one. But number two, we just have to make sure we give clear guidance to the officers on what to do, how to do it, and how to prioritize their level of engagement that doesn't, number one, violate the, the stay-home order or violate anybody's rights, but still enforces the rule of law. People still cannot sell and buy drugs that's illegal, even though right now, that may not be, it may not get prosecuted, we still have to disrupt that activity. I said this earlier, you know, we had a number of takedowns. Our federal partners and our officers were assigned to our federal agencies and, and state agencies. We did a number of takedowns within the last few days and weeks, but we took down, you know, larger organizations and groups. We're still doing that work, so the work did not stop. That work continues.
And Commissioner Harrison, if I may, I was going to add to that point. And so I know, Councilman Pinkett, some of those concerns that you have in those vulnerable communities, we are still working in those very spaces. And so I can't go into detail about our casework, but I can simply say to you that we recognize those challenges. We look at those numbers day after day and identify those spaces where we can support patrol with more in-depth investigations that they may not have the bandwidth to do. So we're working in those spaces to bring some relief, recognizing that, that this is still a problem and a challenge, though we're still faced with COVID and, and, and everything else. So it will not, for us, deter our commitment to being, support those communities in areas that we know that, that drugs, violence, and all of those challenges go together. So we're still in those areas diligently working. And as the Commissioner just said, we've had several takedowns, so we're going to keep pressing. So just because we take down doesn't mean we pull up. We continue to press in those areas until we see the results that we're looking to see with our, with the community at hand.
All right, thank you. Councilman Coen? Councilman Coen? Sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Michelle, and all the folks that are serving. One stat I wanted to go back to, it was mentioned that there's been a decrease in domestic violence-related calls. To me, that's actually concerning. We know that in a pandemic, in a situation where folks are sheltering in place, it's not that there is less domestic or intimate partner violence happening, it's less reporting that's going on, because folks are literally stuck in their home and are, you know, if they're in the same home as an abuser, they are probably not able to pick up the telephone and make a call. So I do not see that decrease as a win, because I know, in talking to House of Ruth and some of the other folks we worked with around reducing trauma, that we're actually seeing more of it, it's just less reporting is going on. So I wanted to go back to that and just think about, or have you all thought about sort of how to address that specific concern? You know, obviously, it's sensitive if the police department is calling into houses, but are we working with partners? You mentioned House of Ruth, but them and others, to make sure that we are addressing what could actually become a crisis as this pandemic continues to go on.
Thank you for that, Councilman Coen. That's a very insightful point. So let me just kind of elaborate a little bit to bring context. So it's not a win in the sense that we recognize and acknowledge. So let me just back up a little bit to just kind of bring it to context. So I can tell you that we've had calls for service and disputes. So when we're going over statistical data, we're talking about UCR reportable crime, which is different for calls for service. That's why I'm able to tell you that I know we've picked up an additional cases over this timeframe that we've been sheltered in. But disputes don't qualify in terms of reporting on the EXAM as UCR. So we know that there is, there are things happening, and we can tell just based on the tempo and some of what's happening in the relationship with our partners, the fact that they don't see the client base coming through the door, we recognize that the client base is still out there. Is why, on a proactive level, we've given some of our, if you will, repeat offenders of domestic violence, we've given those highlights to, to patrol to kind of say, hey, listen, do some knock and talks and check on these families and individuals. So we had to get a bit more creative to figure out, how do we still support community in a way that's more proactive? Though we may not have necessarily gotten a call for service or a crime report, we know that we have addresses and locations in our database where that populace is still vulnerable. That's why having this constant communication, and I'm saying House of Ruth because that information is at my fingertips, we use other relationships and partners to include our Latino relationships, because that's a populace that we're very concerned of, that, that struggle with domestic violence. And our, our immigrant community, like, that's a huge deal for us. So we acknowledge it, we recognize it, and we're trying to be extremely thoughtful and supportive in a way that helps us get that, maintain that line of communication, that relationship, and provide those services. So we're doing our absolute best. There's no perfection in life, but we're committed to it and we acknowledge, that's not a win. So just as you raised that flag for domestic violence, we have that same lens with child abuse. There was a larger question being asked about the vulnerable population with child abuse and human trafficking. Those numbers are not higher. I pulled those numbers before I came down to this call, and our human trafficking cases this year are 11 cases for child trafficking versus 26. That's down. And so a lot of our child abuse cases, as you very well know, come through the schools. Schools are closed, they're sheltered in place. So we don't look at that per se as a win. We have to just find creative ways with your support as the council and community to be able to in-reach to that family and in-reach to that populace and create more avenues that we can get that information and do more to help that vulnerable populace. So, so don't mistake the terminology, sir. We don't, it's not a win. We, we're really trying to, to find a way to, to work collective, more collective, and find some creative ways to get it out there, because we're all challenged, especially while some of our partners are finding new ways to come online, to be able to, I know they did some type of like a, a conference calling, but the challenge is, when children are on conference call, even for learning, they're in the home, they're with a potential abuser. So we're just trying to think creatively how to break some of those barriers to make sure that we're able to touch the resource. So I, I know that even with meal pickup, we, we're trying to discuss, how do we use meal pickup as a way to like, check in? So we're really trying to strategize and think on more thoughtful of how to do that.
Can I, can I just add a little bit to that? Thank you, Colonel. I, I'll give an example. There's a, a house in Councilman Costello's district that came to our attention. There's a variety of things happening in the household, and we suspect that there may be some domestic violence occurring based on a video that we saw from a neighbor. The major reached out to House of Ruth and asked them if they could come and, and connect with, with the family to do an assessment, because, and I, I think the Colonel had alluded to this, you know, those workers at the House of Ruth and other, other organizations, they know how to interact with, with the victims and get them to, to, to reach out for additional assistance in a way that our officers can't do it. They're much less threatening. So we really did work very cooperatively with the agency to try and get much-needed assistance. And so what I would say is, if there are properties that you are aware of, or that you have, you know, that you have heard some rumblings that maybe something's going on, let's get together and make sure we can get some resources out there. They may not be police resources, but you know, they will have a, a kind of a coordinated effort to get, to get some, some support to the folks.
Real, real quickly, Councilman, just so you know, State Attorney Marilyn Mosby and I had that conversation about this specific topic earlier today, talking about the, the, the trend of calls for service versus the trend of actual cases and actual offenses, and how we reconcile the two, so we can get good and accurate information, whether the flow of information is to the police department, or to the state's attorney's office, or to an advocacy group, and how we connect those dots. If the trend is decreasing in calls for service, but, but how we make sure we get the information when we need to have it. So you should know that, you know, we had this very conversation today, so it's not absent, it's something that we're actually working on.
And we talked about this on a previous call with the, with the, on our smaller group, that they can also text complaints. They don't have to call 911, they can actually send in a text message to 911, and we can respond.
All right, thanks a lot. Councilwoman McCray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question, my questions are regarding response rates, the high priority calls, the code one calls. Since COVID-19, have we been able to respond quicker and reduce times? And is the performance goal of under 10 minutes for those calls, are they still being met?
I don't, I don't think, honestly, I don't think we could respond much quicker than we were responding previously, because we, we never, we, when we get a priority one call, it supersedes any call. So if someone else is on a, a lower priority call, they're, they leave that call and they go to the priority one. And yes, our, our response times, I believe we were already in the meeting those from the very beginning. We have a very good response time to the priority one calls.
Let me, let me just say this, that's a good question. When, when we, when we developed the crime plan, we put in there a 10-minute or less response for priority calls. That didn't mean that we were exceeding 10 minutes, it just meant that we never had a goal, a written goal. And so many of the calls we would get into far beneath 10 minutes. And some is as low as one and two minutes through ShotSpotter, that was, those calls were actually beating the 911 system. And so we were getting the calls much faster than the 911 system. That 10-minute response time meant we never actually had an official goal as an agency. And so it's not that we were exceeding 10 minutes, but now we actually have a goal.
Councilwoman McCray, is that the only question?
That was my, that was my only, you know what, Commissioner, are we, so I'll say this, for the response times, have they been down since COVID-19?
Yeah, they're down 26%. And so calls for service are down 26%, which means we have 26% fewer calls. And, and so we're tracking that. We can actually have fewer calls thereby getting to other calls faster. But we were already getting to high priority calls, you know, really quickly.
Okay, got it. Thanks a lot.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, if I can follow up on that. Mr. Commissioner, Colonel, thinking about how also we've kind of, you guys have kind of escalated the implementation of, of pushing more people to online and TRU reporting, I know that, just looking at it, that, that both are continuing to go up. And we can talk about how that has an impact on what the Councilwoman was asking to, because if we are sending people who have these lesser crimes to TRU or, or to CopLogic instead of, for example, instead of, of, of an officer going out for larceny from auto or for, you know, destruction of property, talk about how, or hit-and-run, property damage only kind of thing. Talk about how, how that impacts calls for service as well.
Well, good question. Though, some of those calls are being pushed to telephone and online reporting. And so when citizens call, they're redirected to that, and we're pushing out information about how to go about making, making those reports to us. And we're pushing out to the officers that there are a number of cases that have to be pushed that way, because the, the traditional response, because people, because they're not going to be prosecuted, because courts are closed, and when perhaps not making arrests, but rather we may be issuing a summons, our citation for something, as opposed to making a physical arrest, we had to get clear guidance on what the officers should do. And so we had to give that same guidance to our call-takers and dispatchers on how to ensure people are redirected to telephone reporting and to online reporting, so we can minimize the, the physical response by police officers. So it's dual communication, so the officer's in the field, but it's also to the call-takers and 911 operators.
And just, just to go to that point, just a little further, just a deeper question. So I see, for example, from January 1st to April 18th of 2019, we handled 164 larceny cases in CopLogic compared to 281 this year, 340 total, some were rejected. But then for larceny from auto, we're down one, 126 in 2019 to 2020. And we talk about how we can try to communicate even more, because I think, of course, as this is a system that I help bring to the department, I think this is a great way for us to provide great service to the citizens, but also, especially during COVID-19, we want to limit our officers in the public interactions, everyone's interaction with other people, how everyone who's going to see this and listen to this can understand that you're still getting the same service, you're still getting that report for your insurance company if you had a destruction of property or hit-and-run, you're still getting that information for your larceny from auto, you're going to get that number immediately, but that also you don't have to put yourself at risk of violating, you know, social distancing, physical distancing, but also allowing the women and men of BPD to stay focused on the violent crime issues that we have involved.
Yeah, that's a great point. We've had a, a large number of, we had the rejections, but we've had a decrease in the number of rejections. So I think we're doing a, a little bit better job in getting the good information, so we don't have to reject those calls or those, or those online reporting. I think communication strategy is the big part. Let, let's figure out how to do a better job, you know, with your help, with social media, with mainstream, and through neighborhood associations, how we push the information out to people about what they actually need to give us good information, so that we can have fewer rejections and so that their, their reports can be taken and can make it through the system. I'm seeing that we had fewer rejections, we just have to figure out how to take more in with having fewer rejections as well.
And another thing, Councilman, is since we, since COVID has started, the larceny from auto reporting has gone up, basically 18 more cases. And then total, we have 90 more cases were taken in CopLogic, which saves about 135 hours. And then one thing that we can't overlook is that some of the districts, when they start to struggle with larceny from auto problems, they request that the calls not be taken by CopLogic or TRU. They want the officers to handle calls so they can get ahead of those patterns on a, on a quicker basis. So sometimes the, you give up a little bit to gain a little bit of intel, and it's some of the problematic areas of larceny from auto.
Just a quick question, follow-up to that, Colonel, to you, just to see that, do you think that, just, I'm talking about timing-wise, do you think it's easier or quicker for them to be able to, you guys to have your analysts look at that, that data, if it's done through CopLogic or if it's done when the officers are taking a physical report?
It's probably easier with the officer taking a physical report, because they have the report for the very next shift. So if they get four of them on daywork, Charlie Schiff knows that daywork had four of them overnight, and Adam Schiff and Charlie Schiff can pay quicker attention to it. It's not a quick, a long lag time, but sometimes in the, in the commander's mind, they, they can get, grab their hands around it a little quicker, and that's what they want to do to try to jump ahead of any of these trends.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Burnett? Vice Chair Burnett? Councilman Burnett, you there?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I'm having some, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Sorry, I'm having connection issues.
We can hear you.
It's delayed here.
We can, we can hear you, just keep talking.
Quick question, back to the reporting. For the, uh, reporting of, um, human trafficking, I, about.
All right, we're, we're losing you over there. Do you want to, uh, you want to try to get a better connection and then I'll, I'll get you back?
Or Count, or Count Chairman, he could put.
Well, I'm into the all, so it's not good. I'll just type my question into the comments, into the chat.
Okay, sounds good. I'll read it all.
I guess if I was waiting, I, I type in it, uh, for the Colonels. We also had an issue, a couple of ATM, uh, robberies. Can you guys talk about that, if we're seeing a trend of those?
Yes, we are. Actually, we, we had one last, yesterday in the Western. We act, we have a lookout for some cert, for, for some vehicles that we publish in flyers. The officers are aware of it. And matter of fact, one of our LPR units in the Northern yesterday picked up on a pickup truck that they thought was, could have been involved in these ATM. They're not really robberies, they're burglaries because they're doing it either in the middle of the night or they, they'll actually, the one in the Western happened at 6:18 in the evening, which is very unusual. Usually they were hitting us in the middle of the night. And several months ago, we had this problem not only here, but in PG County and parts of Anarundo County. And then it kind of went away. So we're looking to see if maybe these same suspects are at it again or if it's just a, a different group of people that are hitting us with these ATMs. But yes, we've had several of them with a couple of vehicles out there. We just haven't been able to catch them this time yet, but we will.
And the other challenge has been some of those businesses that they've been able to do that with, the device itself is not bolted. Like the device itself is very, is extremely mobile and not secured. So that's one of those things that we have to like, and we can of course leverage your support, uh, Council President, to the communities and for those business partners. But if you're going to have ATMs, do, do your best to ensure that the security plan, um, you know, coincides with that type of, uh, device in the building.
I think a couple of them were even outside.
So I got a, I got Vice Chair Burnett's question. He sent me the message, so I'll be his spokesman for today. The question is, are we seeing an increase in calls for service for missing persons?
So, um, no is the, is the short answer. I know that it seems like we've had more simply because we've been doing a much better job in terms of turnaround of pushing that information outward facing to the public to get their support. We've had some of our senior populists that have, uh, vulnerable adults that have been out, but we've not had a uptick in cases at all for missing persons. And that includes human trafficking.
Gotcha. Okay. And the other thing that Vice Chair Burnett mentioned was that there was an ATM theft in his district this morning, which I'm assuming is on your radar.
Yeah, yes, sir, that, that is. That's the one that Colonel Wally was, uh, just, uh, talking about in the overview. And so we had our weekly meeting. Today, we meet every day virtually to talk to the districts about crime and patterns and trends. But today we had our weekly comstat meeting, discussed that. And so they're working on some deployment adjustments. But with that challenge specifically of the, uh, businesses and ATM, that's, that's going to have to come with some support from the businesses as well in terms of like cameras, lighting, some other security features. So we're working on that to include deployment to help curb that.
Gotcha. Okay, and, um, can, can somebody elaborate on where we are today with that, with the plane program? It stands to give us a quick update.
Very good. We had arguments. We, being our chief legal person, uh, legal advisor and chief of our legal team here had arguments in court, I believe on Tuesday. And we're waiting for a decision from the judge. You're told he could come as early as right, as early as right now, but no later than the end of the day on Friday. And so we agreed that we would not move forward with the program. Although we are ready to begin operations, we began training a number of individuals in the department on how to receive information and how to, how to request the information from the analysts who are employed by the vendor. But we agreed not to move forward and fly or allow the vendor to fly rather until we get a, a decision from the judge of the case and the law.
And so, once the decision is made, if it's allowed to proceed, what is the timeline when the plane is actually in the air?
Well, the vendor, I, from what I'm being told, the vendor is prepared to start with at least one plane. And there's a, a number of, you know, I'll let, I'll let my chief of staff jump in and tell you that he's been taking a leak, but we're prepared to go pretty fast.
Yeah, actually, you know, we're, we're prepared to get at least one plane in the air as soon as next week. When speaking to the federal court, they are anticipating a decision being brought forward either today or tomorrow. Uh, and we, we thank the court for their expedience on this because it is something that we wanted to make sure we understood the path forward. Um, and so we are anticipating at least one plane being operational as early as next week to begin flight operations. But to, to have as many as, uh, two to three planes in normal operation sometime in the first or second week of May. So there's been a slight delay because of the court. But we are moving forward on all of our workflow processes, all of our, uh, you know, various means of recording the information and making sure that we have the right setup in place so our detectives know how to get the information and data. And, and that's what we've been working on is our internal processes.
And so can we get a list, in efforts of transparency to the committee, of any vendors that are involved in, in this program? Uh, because there's certainly still a lot of unanswered questions. And one of the key questions, um, as far as the city is concerned, is having, is knowing who has access to this data, who has access to the information, also who's, who's involved in this whole program? And so it's important to know, you know, who's, who's providing any goods or services, as well as who has access to this data and who has access to the cameras, et cetera. So is that something that you guys are able to provide to the committee as soon as possible? Which I assume it's already available considering you're ready to go by next week?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, ju- just, just as an overview, no one has access to the imagery data provided by the company other than BPD. So that's, that is written into the agreement that we have built with the, uh, with the aerial, uh, company.
And so the company doesn't have access to the, to the own, their own surveillance?
Well, they have access to their own data, but they are restricted from sharing it with anyone other than BPD. And if they, if they do so, it'd be in violation of their agreement and they'd be subject to significant civil penalties and, uh, and a violation of the overall, which would be grounds for termination.
Right. So I mean, within their company, I'm sure they have vendors that, that make the wheel spin. And so being that we're the only comp, we're the only customer that I'm aware of in the United States that is, is utilizing this technology, I think it's just important to know what vendors they're working with, you know, if they might have an IT department or they might have, you know, any other services being provided to them. Because that means that physically there are other people that do it. So like if they had a contract with, you know, um, a company that provided, you know, servicing to the plane or to the technology, um, then physically those people do have access to it. And so it's important for us as a committee in a city to know who those people are.
Absolutely, yeah. We can get you a list of those vendors. I do know that they are contracting with, uh, with a flight school out of, um, Martin State Airport in the county, which is the same airport we use for our helicopter operations. Um, and so that's an example of one company, it's actually a local company. They're also contracting with, uh, an analytics training firm to train up their in-house analysts on how to be able to use that data. They're, they're actually doing a lot of really good local hires too, which is.
And do you know of any of those companies?
Not off the top of my head, but I will get those to you.
Okay. Do you know of any other, uh, any other companies that they're using?
Again, I'd, I'd have to go back to the vendor to get a full list, we, we will get that.
Gotcha, okay. And then as far as on the BPD side, because that also wasn't clear, is there specific, uh, people in BPD who are assigned to this specific technology? Or is it going to just be another tool in the toolkit for detectives?
So we actually, we've actually set it up so that no one from BPD itself has direct access to the imagery data. Requests are going to be made of the vendor so that evidentiary packets are built. And then only the evidentiary packets relevant to an actual crime are provided to the detective for the purposes of investigations. So we have those workflows that we are setting up now to make sure that the flow of information is going in the right way and that we're not just providing direct access to our detectives who don't need direct access in order to get information about their cases, about the incidents of their investigation.
All right, so who, who has to approve each request? Who's making that decision?
So again, that workflow is going through, uh, finalization right now, but it's going to go through our watch center and through, um, actually Drew Vaught, who I believe is on this call as well. We're setting up that process, that protocol. We've actually assigned a lieutenant to kind of spearhead the day-to-day operations of that workflow. That lieutenant will ultimately, who works for Drew Vaught under Deputy Commissioner of Operations, will be the one kind of being able to work through those workflows and make certain that those folks are getting that information and that there is proper follow-up being done at the various levels.
And, and then it's limited to only three crimes, murders, non-fatal shootings and armed robberies.
Gotcha, okay. And so I'll just ask in advance that, you know, because of the timeline that you guys were laying out, if it is approved and it does go in the air, if we can just add that to, you know, the intro in, in the next hearing as to how many, um, how many requests have been made? I assume if you're saying that there'll be as many as three planes, I assume that means it covers the entire city based on the square mileage that they were talking about capacity per plane. So, um, I would assume that each incident would have a corresponding request. And so if you can just, you know, be prepared with that for the next hearing as well. Are there, are there any other committee members who have a question on this? Some people's hands are still raised, so if you do have a question, feel free to just speak up. Nope. All right. So, um, Colonels, do you want to just give a quick, a quick overview by district and then, um, we'll conclude?
We can do that. Basically, the Central is pretty easy. They are probably the only district that I've seen in a long, long time where every single Part One category is down except for a few subcategories of robberies. And they're, they're, they are doing extremely well with their deployment. We have the daily downtown deployment that still is in place every single day. That's going to continue indefinitely and it's staffed by administrative people from throughout the city that don't take away from our normal resources, so that assists it. Plus them being up in their hand, in the hearing gun violations is also a great help. Southeast District is doing very well if you exclude the home invasions. They are, that's the only category that they're up in and your main issues. So they also have, they're getting, they've got their DAT teams working in the areas. And what they're, what I think has happened there is they've done such a good job with robberies. They've pushed them up into the Eastern. So you see the Eastern is up a little bit in robberies. I think that's only about seven or eight cases, so they can catch that relatively easy. But the Eastern, like we talked about earlier with the Eastern and Western, both doing extremely well this year. And that the analogy in the department, if we can win the Eastern and Western, that's a huge start to winning the entire city because they are significantly, um, are problems almost every single year leading violence. So we've got to keep them on pace and then we got to move to the Northeast and get them on track with their crime numbers. They are trending down since we started with SWAT there about three weeks ago. Also, uh, Major Preston is building out her second district action team, which will come online. They've been backfilled with trainees so that when these, this class came out, this recent class, it just got put into the patrol numbers. I had already backfilled enough people to start a second district action team. And I think once they come online, you'll see a big decrease there because even with one action team, they're up in hand-done violation. So with the second one, I think they're, they're going to end up getting better. And no, neither, neither them or, nor the Northern are that far behind that we can't catch it by the end of the year and both end up in the green instead of the red. Jumping to the Northern, they kind of fall in the same boat as the, as the, uh, the Northeast with the robberies. But Major Gibson talked about an extensive plan today on the, on the conference call for comstat. And I think he's going to put the resources in the right places. Plus we will send him some extra resources to help him quash these robbery prob, problems that he's experienced thus far this year. Northwest is doing very well, with the exception of homicides are up. But for the most part, they are doing really well. They were also hit with the home invasions, but despite the home invasion increase, they, uh, they are down in robberies. They are un, unique and in one that we talked about this on the conference call too. They're the only district in the city that's up in burglaries. They're up 5% in burglaries. So we talked about that. The captain was working on a plan for that to address those because even though it's a small rise, it's the only one in the city that's going up. Need to address that. Jump to the Western, they are doing extremely well. The only thing that they're up on is the home invasions, but the robberies are still down. And their auto thefts are up, which is kind of unique. Eastern and Western are up in auto thefts. And if I'm talking about auto thefts in the Eastern and Western, that's really a good thing because that means we're not talking so much about the homicides and shootings, even though they still have a good number and we got to continue to drive those numbers down. And then you go to the Southwest who's experienced some hits this week in, in a few areas, namely Frederick and Collins two nights ago. But I think we will close that case in not too distant future. But their non-fatal shootings are up a little bit, but their homicides are down. And again, another, another culprit is the home invasions. Despite the rise there, they are down in robberies. And then you go to the Southern who homicides, shootings and non-fatal homicides and shootings together is what's driving their numbers. But they have the biggest drop in robbery. So it's kind of, they're kind of unique, but they had a spike. And they've had some areas kick up that don't normally kick up. Number one is Pig Town. We ran into an issue with Pig Town. I grew up there, so I, I keep on track of that for the most part. But they also had some issues over in that Brooklyn area where we have two groups that are feuding with a back and forth that we're trying to get ahead of. And we will, it's just, uh, the detectives just have to, once they get out there and get the intel. But for the most part, the districts are doing well. The officers are working extremely hard and they're out there every single day, still trying to do our job despite all the obstacles that we have to overcome.
And, uh, Council President, I know you always ask me every week and I just don't want you to feel like I forgot about you at all. Ninety-four this week for our total at-risk individuals that were arrested with warrants from WATF's end.
Yeah, I think it's hopped off. But I'll relay the message.
Yes, thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
And then his, and his follow-up question is going to be how many out of how many? So.
Yes, I'll take that follow-up.
You're playing multiple roles today, huh?
Oh, you know. I'm a spokesman now for, uh, for two council members. All right, does any, uh, do any council members have a question? Uh, Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. But that's what I, it doesn't matter if it's raining, I'll do anything for my, my district.
Okay.
The, um, I know I sound like a broken record and, and what I'm about to say has nothing to do with the, the fine work that Major Webb and the men and women of his team are doing, um, in, in the Western District. But, um, we need help. But, um, we need help, um, trim, you know, immediately as it relates. I'm right across from White Lock and Woodbrook. And it's off the hook. Um, we, we've got to get it under control. Um, whatever, whenever we put pressure on Penn North, all of the communities, well, I'm, I know you all know this, but all the communities around Penn North feel it. And so White Lock and Woodbrook is now, um, back to where it was before. Carrie and Cumberland are back to where it was before. Um, and, um, although this isn't in the Penn North area, um, we, we had had so much success on the twenty-one hundred block of Bryant. And now it's back to where it was before. Um, so, um, Major Webb just needs additional help, additional supports, whatever, whatever we can do to assist. Um, so that these areas will be had so much success, um, don't revert back to where they were. Thank you.
Councilman Cone?
Uh, I think Mr. Chair and, oh, sorry. Commissioner, what are you trying to respond to?
No, I was just saying, I got it. Thank you.
I saw, I, we already saw, we already saw the, uh, the RV, we see the RV behind him. So he's, he's good. Go ahead, Councilman Cone.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner and staff. Um, want to lift up something that has been a challenge for all of us since well before COVID nineteen and actually remains a challenge right now, uh, with an added layer of sensitivity, which is officers getting out of the cars and proactively engaging. And I want to lift up and recognize that that is a trickier proposition now, given what coronavirus is doing and has the potential to do to all of us and to officers included. Um, however, I do want to stress that just sitting a car and watching people doesn't really do much in the crime fight. And also doesn't really endure officers to community. So today I got a call from one of my pastors in my district. Uh, as I think most folks know, my district is, uh, very immigrant heavy. A lot of folks from Central America and all over the world. And I will say that community in particular is extremely anxious right now, as are all of our communities. Um, so today pastor calls me up, uh, this pastor does food distribution out of his church. And he said, you know, what was really frustrating was we had a police officer drive up, stop his car and then just sit there in the car watching people. And the message that was sent to the community is we are watching you. And I know, and you know, that he was probably there to sort of insist on social distancing and to encourage people to be in line in a way that's healthy and productive. But that is not the message that the pastor received, and that's not the message that my constituents received. And, you know, to his credit, I called up our major and my captain and he immediately responded and you know, was very clear about making sure the officers understand that dynamic and are out of their cars and engaging and, you know, just smiling and saying hi to folks when they get out, when they're looking at a long line of people waiting for food. But I would again, just lift up, and I know this council and every other council probably has said this a million times, but the importance of proactive community engagement in this moment cannot be overstated. Because I think folks are feeling so anxious and unhappy. Um, I would just, again, really, really, really push to make sure there is a clear message to officers at the street level that they are getting out of the car and engaging with folks.
Thank you for that point. Thank you.
All right. Any other, uh, councilmen have, or councilwoman have questions?
I do. I have a question in reference. I have a question, um, Chairman. I was just curious because I, I, um, some concerns in reference to, um, people being outside and, um, exercising and being a little confused, um, in reference to, um, following the law with wearing a mask and exercising and what they're doing at, um, police, I mean, what they're doing around outside activity in, um, playgrounds and activities like that. Can we just go on record, just to clear everything up? Um, what essentially we are doing when police officers see people in the community, uh, at playgrounds or exercising in the community?
The guidance we've been given, giving officers is, is what we think is consistent with what the governor's stay-home order was and what it means. And getting legal interpretation that people cannot be outgoing to places unless they're traveling to essential places like a hospital, drugstore, grocery store or some essential employment. Um, other than that, people can go outside to get fresh air, to exercise or to walk a dog or things like that. They cannot be in places where they're not supposed to be. But the, the way we interpret that in the explanation we've been given that people can go outside, people can be near their home and can get some level of outdoor exercise, as long as they practice social distancing. As long as it's, you know, you know, perhaps with a family member are, they're not congregating at churches or other things like, you know, and, you know, non, places that are not stores and any place they go into, they have to have their face covered with a mask or some level of face covering. While in transport and while inside of a, of a place or dwelling, uh, or, or business, you know, a grocery store, supermarket or drugstore. Um, they have to have their face covered. And so that's the, one of the most recent, uh, orders that have, that has come out. And so those are the instructions we're giving officers. And so we're not telling people that they have to stay inside. The stay-home order does, is not the same as stay inside. It just means you can't be taking transportation and you can't go to places that should not be open and it should be for essential needs only.
And there has been, uh, uh, am I correct in saying there had not been any arrests for people, you know, exercising or, um, you know, walking their dog or anything like that or at the playground? Would that be a correct statement?
That is correct. We have not made arrests for that. We're trying our best to always get voluntary compliance by putting out the message over the loudspeaker or informing people in person. And to make sure we're enforcing this social distancing and the stay-home order. And, you know, a number of, a number of places, whether here or somewhere else, people have taken, taken some of the equipment off of the playground to, to disincentivize people from going there and, and to discourage people from, you know, playing on the playgrounds. But people can, you know, from, from what we've been told, people can walk a dog, people can go out for exercise. They just have to practice social distancing. And when around other people and when going into other facilities, have to have their face covered.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
No problem. Anybody else? All right. If there's no, uh, further business, uh, thank you all for joining, uh, in this hearing. Uh, I don't need to tell you to check around you and make sure you take everything with you because wherever you are, uh, hopefully, uh, you can leave your stuff there. Uh, but thank you, Commissioner and, uh, the rest of the team for what you guys are doing and continuing, uh, to serve, uh, even under these, uh, circumstances. Thank you again also for quickly getting, um, you know, uh, that district reopened and getting those officers tested in record time. I was actually asking Michelle how it was possible that you guys got that stuff done that quickly. Uh, but it's certainly appreciated by, by everybody across the city. Um, and so thank you all.